... or nurse practitioner who is in the primary care office. They may go alongside the primary care provider to do a warm handoff, to meet a patient there, and they may be treating patients for short term within their office. If a pediatric, for me, because I work with pediatricians, if they have a -- so I took a call from a pediatrician in Brunswick who's been involved in our program for many years last week, and she called me and she said, "You know, I was on vacation last week and every single patient I saw yesterday had a mental health concern." She goes, "I didn't call because of all the work you've done with us, I actually knew the answer, but there was one that I just had to call on." And so she called me, and what we do is we say, "We'll call back in 45 minutes," which is kind of unheard of to have that level of access to answer questions. But they're so appreciative, they want to call back whenever I can provide that call back. It was a fairly simple situation where I could answer the question. She called this a few days ago and wanted to know how she could write a prior authorization in order to make sure it got funded for a certain medication, because she didn't know how to do that, she didn't have the skill set to do that. So this provider is trying to treat patients, trying to write prior authorizations, trying to reach out to schools, trying to work with families, as well as if they're covering for deliveries, they might be popping over to the hospital to cover for deliveries. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And so how would your system work with that patient if that person were in, if that patient were in your office or gave you that?
So the way it happens is, so the Child Psychiatry Access Program, what happens is we do periodic lunch and learnings, so we go and we meet folks and we teach them a lot of specific topics. I've taught about screening tools, about treatment of ADHD, about handling disruptive behaviors in the preschool age population, because families want to be treated there more than coming to a specialist like me. And then when they have a question, they call our clinical care coordinator who gets information, gives me the information, and I call them back. And it could be about changing a specific medication, it could be about where to go next for services, it could be about how to talk to a family about concerns about mental health in order to help the family here because their level of denial is so great. I also provide leadership and facilitate a peer consultation program for the mental health integrated clinicians, where we sit down and we talk about cases that are happening in primary care, and we problem solve and how best to go about taking care of those folks.
Where do you see telemedicine heading your field for Maine?
It has had fits since birth. It's been hard to get going. I know it's quite active, folks in Washington are doing it up into Alaska. I think there's huge value in it. It's more challenging, I think, in Maine in that my, I'm not from Maine, but my experience has been there's almost, if you're not from my community, it's hard for me to trust you. So building the trusty relationships to make it most successful, I think, are essential, and that actually takes some time and effort to do as well. But I think that there's a huge value, a huge opportunity for that. I would hate to see it be a provider from a different state doing telemedicine services in Maine.
Thank you. Renee Blanchett.
Good afternoon, Senator Hamper, Representative Rotundo, Senator Reiki, Representative Gutte, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and Health and Human Services. My name is Renee Blanchett, I'm the Executive Director of the Franklin County Children's Task Force, and I'm testifying in support of the comprehensive early care and education system for Maine. That system includes Maine Families Home Visiting, Head Start, and Child Care. I'm specifically here to share more detailed information about the program that I'm most familiar with, which is Maine Families. Maine Families is this state's primary intervention program for families with infants and toddlers. Home visiting services are available in every county in Maine and are located in a variety of community agencies and travel settings. Local sites work closely with other community partners and providers to collaborate and avoid joint duplication of services. The families that we serve are among the most vulnerable. In 2014, nearly 2,400 families participated in Maine Families. Families who received ongoing services faced challenges such as low educational attainment, single parenting, low incomes, physical or mental health diagnosis, and family violence. The program conducted over 22,000 home visits last year, providing individualized parent education and support to those families. Outcome data is consistently gathered and evaluated to measure the success and continued quality improvement. There are successful outcomes in many areas. Those include reduced incidences of child abuse and neglect, early identification of developmental delays, linkages to primary care providers, immunizations, oral health, and health insurance, as well as reduced exposure to secondhand smoke and other substances. Some specific examples of outcomes include families involved in child protective services at enrollment, 95% had no further reports of substantiated allegations for child abuse and neglect. Home visitors prevent child abuse and neglect by helping families build skills and confidence and managing the stresses of parenting young children. Age-eligible children are regularly screened for developmental delays. Home visiting identified 177 children last year with possible delays and provided support to address those delays early before those children needed costly remediation in the school system. 92% of children have up-to-date immunizations versus the Maine rate of 73%. Over half of the children in the program exposed to secondhand smoke at three months old are no longer exposed by the age of nine months. Home visiting addresses safety issues of concern to all of us. The home visitors provide safe sleep education to families and deliver the period of purple crying information to families to help them understand and cope with infant crying and prevent shaken baby syndrome. Home safety screenings are offered on a regular basis, where mothers are screened for domestic violence, and sites work closely with the domestic violence partners in their area to support safety planning for families in need. You'll hear more about Maine Families in the coming weeks as the program faces a funding cliff later in the year. We hope that you'll support us to address the needs of Maine babies, the youngest and most vulnerable system.
Thank you, Senator.
You know, you've always looked in this direction. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. That statement on the top of page two, "Families Involved with CPS at Enrollment," how many families, if you know that it's 95%, you must have an idea how many that represents in families.
How many families? State the question again, I'm not sure what you're asking.
What you've said is, "Of the families involved with CPS had enrollment, 95% had no further reports." How many families does that represent?
That we enroll?
Yeah.
2,000, a little over 2,000 families, 22,000 home visits, and some of those families have multiple children that are actually meet the criteria for services.
So you're saying that there were 2,000 home visits, 2,000 visits to families that had been involved with CPS, and after your work with them, 95% of them had no more issues that required them to stay in that category?
What I'm saying is that anyone who, when they enrolled in our program, had services through child protective services, they no longer had, 95% of them did not have any further involvement with child protective after receiving our services.
Representative George.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here. The funding cliff you talked about is related to this federal grant that we heard about earlier, or is it?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaker Plon.
Hi, thank you for inviting us to speak today.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Senator Hamper, Representative Rotundo, members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs, Senator Reiki, Representative Gutte, members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services, Maine P. Long, Chief Operating Officer of Woodford's Family Services, testifying in opposition to the children's program rate cuts being proposed in the state of Maine budget with Section 65 by Page 28. I am speaking for both my agency and the Maine Association of Community Services Providers. Woodford's Family Services is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit social service agency providing services to more than 800 children and adults throughout Maine, primarily focusing on individuals with intellectual disabilities and autism. The proposed rate cuts affect our early childhood programs serving 90-plus preschool children with developmental disabilities such as autism, increase preschools throughout the state, Westbrook, Paulson, and Oakland, assumed to be one of them qualified. Secondly, our psychiatry or management program located in North Fork serves 120-plus children and adults with complex medications. Thirdly, our home and community treatment and outpatient program serves 50-plus children and their families in their homes. And the last impact of our services is our in-home support program, serving 90-plus children and their families in their homes in communities throughout Maine. That's our Section 28 program. Woodford's primary concern is the rate setting process. The proposed Section 65 and Section 28 rate cuts range from a low of 10% for Section 65 and 28 to a high of 62% for medication management. These cuts are being made on rates that were established more than five years ago with outdated methodologies that do not account for increases in normal expenses such as wages, benefits, rent, et cetera. Woodford's Family Services, and that's we recommend that, the department rate setting units work with providers to set rates on a reasonable level based on actual information. Slashing rates by comparing them to other states and not understanding the methodology built into the out-of-state rates should cause concern, but certainly has the potential to cause harm to the services within Maine. I only ask for a well-thought-out and honorable process that would provide further support for all of them. In my written testimony, which goes in much more detail than what I'm sharing now, I provide an example of 10 different children who receive these services currently and how they and their families have benefited. I also included an email from one parent who wished to share her story in more detail. I wish I had the time within the time allowed to read some of these to you, but if you read nothing else, please read those stories. They're all hard. The business impact on these budget cuts will really cause irreparable harm to our organization, which has served Maine residents for more than 45 years. I have estimated potential loss of jobs, and soon as this will impact that, these rate cuts will happen. I estimate that Woodford's will lose about $5 million in revenue. The MaineCare savings will only be one-third of that amount due to federal matching. MaineCare will save about $1.6 million across the state of Maine matching federal dollars of around $3.4 million, plus approximately 150 jobs. In closing, I ask you to review the written testimony, personal stories, and attached outcome reports for the services affected by these proposed rate cuts. These 10 to 62% rate cuts coupled with no rate increases for the last five years that all these programs have risked. What business can operate with no rate increases on revenues for five years, only rate reductions, and maintain any semblance of financial solvency? In lieu of these rate cuts, that will destroy programs, I recommend that DHHS review and audit high utilization programs and require best practice to be put in place. Our request that the community members ask themselves this question: Are preschools, medication management, home and community, and outpatient services provided by Woodford's and IP agencies worth maintaining? The result will surely be more children placed in residential settings in a matter of state, increased hospitalization with fewer discharge options, and more stress in the community and on public schools. I thank you for your time and your good answer to questions. Thank you. Representative Gutte.
Thank you. Thank you, Gutte.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for the contribution you make to my community, both the services you provide and the great business benefit you bring to Westbrook, and I'm happy to have you there. Obviously, I want to give you this, but I'll look very carefully at the information about the business impact, Woodford's for sure. But I want to ask you a couple of questions about your testimony. The department, as the department, it sounds like the department has described this rate setting methodology, but has the department ever actually shared the detail of, you know, that they asked the employer and how they went about doing it?
Yeah, there was a, last year, we were here working with Section 28, and they did share the methodology that was put in place, and some of the assumptions in there weren't reflective of the actual operational processes in Section 20, especially in our preschools. In our in-home program, it, you know, it was a lot closer, but the, there were missing assumptions that I think should be in there, and we actually met with them a couple times, but it really didn't catch much traction. And those rates were at least five or six years old of that methodology.
So again, you know, I mean, I think during the work sessions, we had this conversation yesterday, too, I think you had a lot of, well, looking for understanding of the methodology, so, you know, any comments you have about that, you know, if you could provide that for the work session, including some of the assumptions that they made or shouldn't have made or anything specific.
I'd be very happy to.
The other thing, and I really do appreciate this, I love you when people come and not just fight back against something, but also maybe make constructive suggestions. It says here that we, you know, look at some other high, some other high utilization programs and, again, you know, is there anything specific you would like us to ask the department to look at, or is that something you can provide us for the work session?
Yeah.
I'd like more information around that.
Yeah, I can give you that real quickly. It would be hard for me to do that, because I don't know the exact utilizations of every program throughout the state, but I'm sure the department is running reports on average visits to the home for a Section 28 or a Section 65 service and try to create some best practice. I think there's money that's potentially saved there, and not in the rate cuts. The rate cuts is not a very surgical way to do it, it's more of a hatchet approach.
So managing the program more than this type of rate?
Yeah, and they do have a department that goes and reviews them, and they did do it for us, I think, once in the last couple of years to check on that kind of stuff, but I think there's opportunity there with the department.
Thank you. Again, I want to keep those jobs, Westbrook, and stay, so thank you.
Thank you, we do, too. And they're not all in Westbrook.
I understand.
Good question.
But you can bring more there.
Oh, we do have gas, we're trying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Plon.
Good afternoon, Senator Hamper, Representative Rotundo, Senator Reiki, Representative Gutte, and the members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and Health and Human Services. My name is Denise Traptan, and I'm the supervisor in the Maine Families Home Visiting Program in Wisconsin's categories. This state-administered program is delivered at a community level by local agencies, and in my area it's delivered through headquarters. I am here in support of investment in early childhood programming, and today will provide information about one of Maine's key family support and early childhood programs, Maine Families Home Visiting Program. Family support programs such as Maine Families are generally referred to as home visiting because they take place in the homes of vulnerable families. They are a proven strategy for strengthening families and saving money. Although the comprehensive program strengthens many areas of family life, there are four main outcomes: improve family self-sufficiency, reduce need for remedial education, reduce healthcare costs, improve safety in the home. With a focus on family self-sufficiency, Maine Families assist parents with complete education and job training. Home visitors work with families to promote school readiness. Maine Families works with parents to support timely immunization and well-child checks, focusing on preventative health strategies. Parental depression and domestic violence screenings identify families in need of other services or other support services, excuse me, that Maine Families can provide linkage to. Because this program is voluntary, participating families are motivating parents who want to do well by their children. The families who participate over time are seeking information, support, or experience they may not have gotten in any other way. Our home visitors are skilled professionals with extensive training and support, supervisory support. The program we utilize in Maine is affiliated with the National Evidence-Based Model of Parents as Teachers, and we are held to extremely high professional standards and measured upon over 100 quality indicators. Our program undergoes rigorous outside evaluation and simply stated, this is a proper network. We foresee all children safe and healthy from the start at home visiting with a critical support needed by many families in Maine to ensure this. Due to the discontinued federal funding, this program is now in jeopardy for the next fiscal year. The loss of federal funding represents 75% of the current budget and will have a huge impact on the 2,400 families in need of these services who participate annually. It will also severely affect the ability to offer the program statewide and the workforce in whom we have such an investment, a workforce made up of some of the most skilled people in our state. There will be proposals that will come before you to continue these services, and we hope that you will help us find a way to do that.
Thank you, Denise. Representative Plon.
2,400 is the current census?
Statewide, yes.
Would you, would you say what percent of the families would benefit? Would you say that?
I would say all families would benefit. I'm not sure what your question looks like, but...
Well, could be, do you, when you're delivering services to 2,400 families, what percentage of the families in the state would benefit from its service? Is 2,400?
I see what you're saying. I, we can actually, we can provide that information for you.
And if you would like to select it, not the whole, just the whole universe, and any way you'd like to slice it that would help us understand how you got to 2,400, because I think initially the program was intended to be universal.
Yes, it's available to anyone, any new parent, so I'm not sure how many new parents there are in this state of Maine, but we can certainly provide that.
Thank you, Denise. Did Ken Olson come in and run?
Hey, Dan. Senator Hamper, Representative Rotundo, Senator Reiki, Representative Gutte, and members of the Joint Standing Committees on Appropriations and Financial Affairs on Health and Human Services. My name is Ken Olson, I live in Bell's, and I'm the Executive Director of KISBIS, a nonprofit that provides a wide range of services to Maine's vulnerable childrens, children and families. We have multiple service sites covering the state from Fort Kent to Bitterford and including day treatment services that are located in Ellsworth and Eastern Illinois. We have a campus in Ellsworth that serves kids who need residential treatment, generally kids that are on the autism spectrum. I'm here to testify today regarding the consequences of a proposed 10% cut to the rate under Section 65, and to challenge the assumption providers will somehow be able to absorb these cuts without significant adverse impact. KISBIS provides three of the services in this section that are scheduled to be cut: home and community treatment, outpatient counseling, and behavioral health day treatment services. I'll focus my remarks on these three services because these are the ones that I know best. Home and community treatment, in this home-based program, these are typically at risk of higher or more expensive levels of care such as residential treatment or hospitalization. KISBIS served 270 such families in 2014. Our program, before factoring in any administrative expense, had a 2014 deficit of approximately $35,000. A 10% reduction in rates would simply make the program not viable. DHHS has to date not offered any justification for cutting the rate to this service, really offered no information about comparative rates with other states. Consequences of rate cuts to the service would be a lack of service availability, families struggling to care for youth with mental health and developmental disabilities at home, loss of employment, in KISBIS alone, this would be 20, 25 full-time equivalents with a number of part-time folks, folks that probably would, would impact about 15 employees. And for taxpayers, increased costs associated with both the increased need for hospitalization and residential treatment, as well as longer lengths of stay in those institutions. In outpatient counseling, DHHS justifies the cuts to this section indicating that other rates in other states are lower, yet the information that they provide includes an average rate for outpatient counseling of $3.61 CAC, or is higher than the rates currently in Maine. Behavioral health day treatment services, this is a one-to-one support provided during the school day, primarily for youth on the autism spectrum, who require this support to achieve educational objectives. While we appreciate the effort to repurpose these funds, funds from this service to improve service availabilities for adults on the spectrum, this really appears to be a case of robbing Paul to pay Paul later, and the bill will come due with interest, as the most effective path to improving outcomes for adults with these disabilities is effective early intervention. Further, as the service is part of the comprehensive education program, it's important to remember that this proposal amounts to a cut in funding for educational programs, and this comes at a time with increasing demands on our schools to meet common core standards, including those, for all youth, including those with significant developmental disabilities. Lastly, as an organization named KISBIS, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that the majority of services under Section 65, at least by name and program, are children's services. While children are not a powerful political constituency, they'll be grateful that you keep their interests in mind as you wrap up with these medical decisions.
Thank you, Ken. Representative Nady?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Mr. Wilson. In your home and community treatment section of your testimony, it says that "Our program, before factoring in any administrative expense, in 2014 had a deficit of approximately $35,000. A 10% reduction in rates would simply make the program not viable." My question is, how is the program viable? Matt?
Well, right now, it becomes a management issue for us to try to address that deficit. The other thing which we do, we will, we will, we will keep programs operational at times using funds from fundraising and other sources when we think that there's a strong community need, and when we think that, you know, some of our management practices can improve viability of the service.
Was 2014 an anomaly, or do you have a series of years where you've lost money?
We have a series of years, we have a series of years of losing money. It's an anomaly that we actually have lost money this year, in 2014, but we've seen, you know, decreasing dollars associated with that service over time.
So you were able to make that loss up through management decisions, yet you feel that another 10% would be able to do the same?
Puts us over the top. Yeah. Puts us over the top.
Thank you.
Representative George. Thank you very much. I run programs within other organizations that are losing, and it's a hard thing to do because you threaten the entire fund balance at some level. But the question I have is, could you just talk quickly about your analysis of the DHHS counseling data, the price differential that you...
The price, yeah, the price differential that was submitted as a rationale for this included the rates from Massachusetts, where you mentioned Vermont. Massachusetts rate was somewhat lower than the rate in, than the rate in Maine. Vermont and Hampshire rates were significantly higher. If you just took the three of those and averaged the rate, it came out to about $87 and some change, whereas the rate in Maine is $84.
Was the, was the lower rate, was that, was there some other funding source, or was that, how did they do that? How did they do that?
In Massachusetts? I couldn't tell you. I would speculate that the population density there and volume may make it possible for them to provide that service in Massachusetts. It would also be, another speculation would be, you know, the number of professionals that Massachusetts has that are able to deliver the service. It may be a struggle to find qualified folks to deliver the service.
Thank you very much.
Representative Gutte.
Thank you, Ken. You know, as you sat here all week, and I think we're getting near the end. I thought you were. You know, we've heard the department talk a lot about priorities, and that's, we've heard other people use other terms.
Sure.
But the term the department uses every day with us is that this budget reflects their priorities. And again, I'm just going to put that here to you. I mean, based on what you've seen, I mean, do you think the department is putting a priority or a heightened priority on the fragile... or a heightened priority on the fragile population of children that you serve?
Well, I, it concerns me that the cuts that are proposed to the children that we serve will result in particularly adverse, adverse, adverse outcomes for those kids, and that, you know, if we're concerned about, about adults with developmental disabilities, as we should be, we've got to remember that the way, the way to control that system over time is to provide youth with the services that they need, which are well-established to show that early intervention makes an enormous difference in terms of adult outcomes. Thank you.
Representative Sandman?
Thank you. You know, it's, it's striking to me the number of jobs that we're talking about being lost here. I know Woodford's mentioned 150. You're talking about 15 employees or 25 or something. I don't know if, as a group, we've added up all the jobs that, you know, all the lost jobs in Maine that this 10% cut, you know, might push all of these businesses over the edge. But if somebody could give us that number, I think if we had a company that was coming into Maine hiring as many jobs as we're going to lose through these kind of critical cuts, I mean, I care even more about the children.
Sure.
But I think that it's important in this political world to mention how important those jobs are and what a grand effect this is going to have on our job market. So I don't know if anybody can get us that data.
Well, we can certainly, you know, through the provider associations, we can certainly put our heads together and try to come up with some good fake estimates about what the job loss would be. I mean, to me, these, to me, there are, there are three groups of people that you, you both should be concerned about. You should be concerned about the families and children that we're talking about. You should be concerned about, you should be concerned about the staff that we employ and the jobs that they have, and you should be concerned about the taxpayers in terms of what the implications are as it pertains to cutting certain kinds of services which, which are likely to result in increased costs with things like residential and hospitalization.
Representative Stone?
Senator, can I have a question? Can I have a question? And your behavioral health day treatment services, you say it's one-to-one, and then you go on to the next paragraph talking about children with developmental disabilities still have to meet core, common core standards. Can I just comment about that a bit and how that's one?
Sure. Well, in, in, in our day treatment program, our, our day treatment program is embedded in a special purpose school. So you who is in our, who is in our day treatment program might be a kid from the December Hennett County who is determined through the IEP process to need, to need one-to-one behavioral support in order to support them, in order to support them through the day. Their school program also has to meet the requirements of Tom LeBourne in terms of them developing skills that, you know, are going to be important to them, whether it's in whatever kind of employment situation they move into. So having that behavioral support, a person who's sitting at their elbow, helping people, helping, helping them keep focus, helping them avoid getting distracted by, you know, their propensity to dysregulate, as we say, is, is critical to that.
Other questions?
I, I, you might just test. So, so if this is cut, if something cut here, then all of these kids, they just stay back here? Do you hear them, so they actually meet these standards?
Well, I think that if, if this is cut, it, it kicks back to, it kicks back to what does our school do about that, and how do we try to respond to meet, you know, to meet their needs? Right now, these, these behavioral health professionals have certification and training, and working with kids on, kids that are first of some autistic spectrum. We might find ourselves in a position where we would use less qualified staff to provide that support.
If they were...
Yeah, it is. It is. It's part of the whole educational system.
Thank you.
Sure. Two questions. Representative Mann?
If I'm mistaken, kids who opt out of that if they're, if they're having a bad day or something, or bad in situations like that, don't they have that opt-out choice?
My understanding is that on a day-to-day, on a day-to-day basis, there are provisions for kids who struggle with behavioral issues to be able to, you know, to be able to take a step back from what's expected of them on that day. But we, as a school, are nonetheless required to have a curriculum that is, that is approved by DOE that basically says, here's what you've got to be teaching these kids regardless of their disability. Regardless of their disability, we expect them to make gains in these particular areas that are identified.
But they cannot opt out?
On, on a day-to-day basis, that might be...
No, I'm, I'm talking about the poor curriculum testing. They are allowed to opt out, am I right?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
I believe, I believe that not just...
I know that, I know that...
...with disabilities, but I think all students are allowed to, in situations, the school can let them opt out, and parents can say they can opt out.
I, I think what you're talking about are the standardized tests that are...
I'm talking about corporate. Yeah.
I, I, I'm not aware of that. I will look, I'll look into it and...
Well, that would be awfully good.
And see what I can find out. I'll bring it back to your work session.
Thank you.
Representative Mann? Thank you. I'm intrigued with this, you mentioned the, the three groups that we are looking at, and our struggle really, I mean, bringing to the taxpayers is spending taxpayer money in a, in a good way, and so, you know, and then having stools stay upright, so all those, those legs are, are holding the stool together. So someone mentioned about high utilization programs and requiring best practices. Rather than having a 10% cut, that we do a more surgical cut and look at high utilization programs and, and then are they using best practices? How would that look to you, if that is the surgical way?
Well, I, I, I think if I were, if I were in your shoes, I would be arguing that rather than look at a 10% cut for us, you know, five or six or seven of the services, I forget exactly the total number that are covered under Section 65, I'd be inclined to look at it service by service.